I would like to call the Tuesday, August 20th, 2024 Papillion City Council meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Fanslaw, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Got a special presentation tonight swearing in four firefighters, and I'd like to invite Chief Gotchup. Chief? Have him share a little bit, and then we'll do the oath and the pinning.
Tradition states that the shield, the badge of the fire service, which we call the Maltese, is similar to the shields used by knights of Malta to defend themselves, the Maltese cross. That design comes from an emblem that they painted in red on their shields. Both the American Fire Service and the International Red Cross have direct ties to this shield. Perhaps more importantly, this symbol, the Maltese, as legend tells us, that these knights of old had a creed or belief that their purpose in life was to serve those less fortunate. They held that service, honor, and integrity, what they may have called gallantry, chivalry, or courage, defined the service to others that they performed, and we in the fire service provide that today. Look at where we are as firefighters. We're the only service in the United States authorized to enter a home, a business, or property without a search warrant in order to fight a fire, to protect the common good of our population. Think about that. In the ongoing discussions of personal privacy being debated throughout the world, there is long established in our laws, in our country, that firefighters can enter any property, whether the owner is present or not, for the purpose of extinguishing a fire, to see if it was left unchecked, if it would do devastating harms that they could prevent. By the very nature, as firefighters, residents still invite us into their homes during their worst days of their lives, knowing that we are there to make things better. This public trust, key word, trust, is a tremendous responsibility and one rarely afforded to anyone except us as firefighters. So every time we do a badge pinning, whether it be a sworn person or not, newest firefighter, veteran, one being promoted, remember the trust it represents and the higher code of conduct we collectively must uphold. And I for one hope that this tradition of the public trust afforded to us every day is in each one of us, and that we live it out. So Mayor, City Council, I'd like to present our newest firefighters. They just completed eight weeks of fire training with Bellevue Fire Department, our first joint training, and it was very well received. I want to thank Bellevue Fire, the city of Bellevue, Mayor Haake, and the City Council, the city of Papillion, Mayor Black, City Council, and your friends and family that are here with you today. Without their support, I don't think this would have been a success. So let me introduce you to William Hall. He's our first candidate right here, closest to you. His wife Jubilee, who will be pinning his badge, he was born and raised in Plattsmouth, Nebraska, currently lives in Omaha. We won't hold that against him. Before coming to Papillion, he was part of the International Guard, serving his country in Lincoln, Nebraska. I like this. William wanted to be a Papillion firefighter because it's always been his goal, and the draw to Papillion, its culture and sense of community, was important to him. Jeannie Beaver, standing with her family, brother, and dad, Brother Mike, who will pin on her badge, born and raised in Papillion, currently lives here in Papillion, moved back in November from the Virginia area. She worked for the Hampton Division of Fire and Rescue in Virginia. Welcome home, Jeannie. Her reason for wanting to be a Papillion firefighter is Papillion's home. After being in the department on the East Coast, she wanted nothing more than to come back and serve her community. Caleb O'Brien, with his dad, Pat O'Brien, Omaha Fire Captain, and his mom, Amy, who will pin on his badge, born and raised in Ralston, your neck of the woods mayor, current resident there. You're not living in Mom and Dad's basement, are you? Don't answer that. Okay. Before coming to Papillion, Caleb worked construction, MW Construction. Caleb always wanted to be a Papillion firefighter, and I like what he says here, Papillion has a great sense of community and department and its culture of excellence, which he likes both. And then last but not least, Jacob Lox, with his girlfriend Sunshine, his dad, Robert Lox, Omaha firefighter, who will be pinning on his badge, and his mom, Susan, born in Traynor, Ohio, but you were raised in Omaha, is that correct? Okay. Oh, you were, okay. Close. Currently lives in Papillion. Before coming to Papillion, he was a Navy veteran, honorably discharged, continues to serve in the reserves at this time. Jacob wanted to be a Papillion firefighter because he lives in Papillion, likes the idea of serving his community, and heard a lot of good things about being a firefighter here. So Mayor, could you come up and do the oath of office for these folks?
If you'd raise your right hand, I state your name.
I, William Hall.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska
Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
Against all enemies.
That I will bear true faith
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation
Without mental reservation.
Or for the purpose of evasion
Or for the purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of a firefighter
Performing the duties of a firefighter.
According to law and the best of my ability
According to law and the best of my ability.
And I do further swear
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of
Nor am I a member of.
Any political party or organization
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States
Government of the United States.
Or of this state by force or violence
Or by force or violence.
And that during such time
And that during such time.
As I am in this position
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States
Government of the United States.
Or of this state
Or this state.
By force or violence
By force or violence.
So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
Chief?
Thank you. And I also want to extend my congratulations, Jeannie, William, Jacob, and Caleb. Welcome to the Papillion family. And thank you to the police officers, firefighters, and city employees who participated in the National Night Out on Tuesday, August 6th. It was a fun community event, and luckily, we had perfect weather for it. The kids were able to meet the police officers and the firefighters and check out some of the public safety equipment and tools while enjoying food trucks and family. And most of you have heard by now, but the city's new 18-hole golf course, disc golf course, I should say, opened last week on the west side of Prairie Queen Recreation Area on the west side of 132nd Street. Thank you to Tony Gowen and his Parks Department for all their work on installing the course. Most of you know, but it was, most of the work was done internally, in-house, with his staff, so again, thank you, everyone. We're proud to be able to add this amenity to our teens, for our teens and our young adults to enjoy, so great work, everyone, and thank you. And then I know that you guys, we've gotten, we've received several questions about our citywide curbside tree cleanup efforts, so I want to give you guys a quick update on that. As we're getting closer to finishing up, those residents that we haven't hit yet are reaching out and asking, have you forgot about us? Are you still coming? And the answer is, no, we have not forgot about you. Yes, we're still coming. And as of tonight, we have four neighborhoods left, so on the east side, so we have the Three Eagles and Cotton Wood left. So if anyone reaches out to you, we know, and we're getting there. Hopefully, by the end of the week, depending on the debris, it may be into next week, but we're getting there. And then also, as a reminder, the city's curbside cleanup is limited to in-town residents only, so if someone reaches out to you and they're SID, encourage them to reach out to their board, their SID board, or the county to get an update on the status for their tree removal. And then just a couple really quick reminders. City Hall will be closed, and offices will be closed on September 2nd in observation of Labor Day, I guess on Labor Day. So hopefully, you get to enjoy the time with your family during that, and our city employees hopefully as well. And then just really quick, don't forget, tonight as well, we have a meeting after this, we have our fiscal year 2425 budget public hearing for the public, and Mayor Black will give that presentation, so that's right after the adjournment of this regular council meeting, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a quick note on that, this is the one time of year we actually have two meetings at the same night, and that is state-mandated for the budget. So we publish the second meeting for 7:30. If the first one goes long, we'll probably just continue and then pick the other one up after, but if this one ends before 7:30, we'll actually stop, take a break, and then start the other one at 7:30. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Most by Councilman Gaines.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ingberg. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seventy-eight zero nace.
Motion passes. Item D1, Ordinance 2033, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, Section 468 to coincide with amendments Nebraska Revised Statute 841412. Is there a council member to introduce?
I have it.
Introduced by Councilman Glover. D2, Ordinance 2034, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to LI Limited Industrial for the property legally described as the west half of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter, Section 10 Township 13 North, Range 11 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southeast of South 168 Street and Cape Bart Road. The applicant is Metropolitan Utilities District. It's the southwest reservoir and pump station. Councilmember to introduce? Introduced by Councilwoman Kluk. Item E1, Ordinance 2025, an ordinance to amend Section 20578 Site Development Regulations of Article 12O Office District, Section 1220583 Site Development Regulations of Article 13LC Limited Commercial District, Section 20589 Site Development Regulations of Article 14CC Community Commercial District, Section 20594 Site Development Regulations of Article 15GC General Commercial, Section 205103 Site Development Regulations of Article 17LI Limited Industrial, Section 205107 Site Development Regulations of Article 18GI General Industrial District, Section 205193 Application of Article 32 Industrial Design Guidelines, Section 205219 Principal Buildings of Article 34 Supplemental Site Development Regulations, and Section 205302 Special Use Permit Procedure of Article 40 Administrative and Procedures, all of Chapter 205 Zoning, having to do with large projects, special use permit requirements, the application area for industrial design guidelines, and the amendment process for special use permits. It's a public hearing, I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E2, Ordinance 2029, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. It's a public hearing, I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. E3, Ordinance 2031, an ordinance to establish 2024-2025 Salary Ranges for Management Exempt Positions. I'll open the public hearing. Proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. E4, Ordinance 2032, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from R4 Multi-Family Residential, the CC Community Commercial, for the property legally described as part of Tax Lot F, Tax Lot G, and part of Tax Lot H, of Section 36 Township 14 North, Range 11 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southeast corner of Highway 50 and Highway 370. The applicant is Stan Horrell with Metro Community College. Open the public hearing. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 Western Road, appearing on behalf of Metropolitan Community College. With me today is Stan Horrell, who is the Director of Campus Planning, also Aaron Person of Metro Community College, and then Brian Emrick of Olson, the consulting engineers on this particular project. So just to kind of, you're probably all familiar with this area, but this is the subject property. It's 144 acres. This is Highway 370, Highway 50, so on the southeast corner. The existing conditions are that it's zoned R4, but unplatted. The property to the east is Westmont, then of course, you have the Omaha National Cemetery to the south, you have R&amp;R Business Park to the west, and you have Amazon and the Black Elk Industrial Property to the north. This is the rezoning and preliminary plat. Preliminary plat's next, but I think they're kind of interchangeable as far as talking about them together. This shows you the full build-out or proposed plan with the entire platted area, both preliminary platted and final platted. You'll notice that there's an access point that's full movement at 370, and the other access point is full movement at Highway 50. There is a little bit of right-of-way that we need to acquire from the federal government on the Omaha National Cemetery, and we're working with, actually, Ben Nelson, with the federal government to get that done. We've already got the right-of-way dedicated from Westmont in place, so we met with them, and they had no concerns over the development. In fact, they granted us the temporary construction easement and the right-of-way necessary to complete that intersection. The proposed plan is obviously Metro Community College's Papillion campus. It'll provide for a number of uses. The rezoning request is from R4 to CC, and what will be called for in the preliminary plat, and then ultimately, the final plat, is 21 lots. It'll provide for educational facilities and buildings, retail office, restaurants, and housing, and they're all designated, you can see the really small print, but they're essentially all of these buildings. It is a phased development, so they're proposing to develop it in three phases. The property to the southeast is really pretty undevelopable, it's a lot of wetlands, and so there's not much really being called for with respect to the southeast corner of the development. That will be some time down the road, but the main campus obviously is in phases two and three. The main road will be constructed. The idea with moving this project forward is that we'll have two years after the final plat is approved to put in all the public infrastructure necessary for Phase 1, and then we'll be able to start really designing buildings and getting the vertical construction. There's no real plans right now for any vertical construction, but they're working on funding opportunities, and also, this is just sort of the first step to get the property finally platted, the infrastructure in place, so that they can come vertical when they have their plans for the particular buildings. This is consistent with the comp plan, calls for this area to be mixed-use 1, high-density residential office and limited commercial, and that's essentially what we have here. We've reviewed the recommendation report and find the same acceptable, and we're here for any questions that any of you might have.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Related item, F1 Resolution R240148, public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as part of Tax Lot F, Tax Lot G, and part of Tax Lot H. Section 36 Township 14 North, Range 11 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southeast corner of Highway 5370. The applicant is Stan Horrell with Metropolitan Community College. I'll open the public hearing. We can carry over the previous comments for the minutes, but anything else?
No, that's it. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're here for questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R240148?
Motion.
That was a lot of them. Most by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
Seventy-eight zero nace.
Motion approved. Thanks, thank you. We look forward to the partnership with Metro, so thank you for everything you're doing. That's all the regular agenda items. I don't think any committees have met in the last couple of weeks. Any comments from the floor? Seen none? Council comments? Couple, last couple of weeks, Chief had mentioned, we had the graduation ceremony for the four new firefighters, and he mentioned it, but we got a few minutes before the other hearing, so I'll go do it. Usually, I think most of the fire training is done in-house through the partnerships and that type of thing, and Bellevue's got a fire training facility, and they were bringing some people on, we were bringing some on, so they went together and created a joint academy, and so they were in a dedicated academy for six weeks? Eight weeks. And the level of training they were able to get out of that was way above what we've ever been able to do by ourselves, and so I think it was a good experiment, good partnership, and I think we're going to try to continue that as long as our hiring syncs up with each other. So appreciated the ability to use our facility and partner on that. And the other side benefit is so many of our calls end up being mutual aid-type calls, and they end up at the same place anyway. Now they already know each other, they've trained together, so I think another good benefit for the county. Ms. Powers and I attended United Cities. Most of that was just getting updates on the special session, so we'll talk a little bit more about the special session during the budget session. And then the Sarpy Chambers had a number of events, ribbon cuttings, we had another business downtown open up. Well, they're still working on their final certificate of occupancy, but they had their ribbon cutting because that had been scheduled, so it's good to see some. In that one, there was a couple of buildings on the east side of 84th Street that had been owned by an out-of-state landowner that maybe didn't necessarily care about the character of downtown Papillion, and a local Papillion resident bought that building, it's the old Papillion Times Building, and they're putting their own business in, and then they're also setting it up so they can lease out a couple of spaces. So we're going to, again, have a, now we'll have an owner-occupied local business downtown, so I think that's going to help a lot on the east side, create some of the momentum over there. And then we had, we've had some good meetings with the developer on the public worksite redevelopment that you'd previously voted on, forced to negotiate with, working on some final things related to a site plan. I would hope within four to six weeks, we might actually have something in front of you to start that process, depending on how the next couple, three weeks go, but it's been very promising. And then just a reminder, on September 21st, the library is having a book festival and an author expo, so if you know of local artists that want to showcase their work, have them reach out to the library for that event. So I think that's most of the last couple of weeks. Most of it's been trying to watch the legislature and understand what they're doing to us. Any other council comments? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Fanslow. Please vote.
Seventy-eight zero nace.
We're adjourned. We'll read adjourn in about seven minutes. I'd like to call the Tuesday, August 20th, 2024 Papillion Council Budget Hearing to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Fanslaw, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. The annual budget meeting does, statute requires a presentation of the budget, and so I'll go ahead and do that. And since we do record this, even though we don't have a lot of people here, I'm still going to do the whole presentation because this does get recorded and sent out to the public, and I know a lot of people watch it. So we will have a public hearing, but before I open it, I wanted to do the overview, and it will be a little, it'll be a little long. But first, I want to thank the staff for all the work early in the process, earlier this spring, all the department heads and staff below them do a lot of work in the springtime, first and second quarter. That starts working together at the administration level, and then as things start coming together late July, early August, we start the individual one-on-one with council to make sure that everything we've been doing up to that point, we think we've been working under the council goals, but that's our sanity check, have we been listening right, and have we missed anything? So I thank you, everybody participated in those. And then the budget was formally published to the public on July 26th and introduced at council on August 6th, so the budget's been out into the public realm for a little while now. State statute does require the presentation, and that's all it requires, but we think we're a little more transparent because basically, the presentation I put into a letter form, and that is with the budget when it's introduced, so really, the presentation's been in the public realm already for three weeks, but I'll review that letter. So the city does remain in a healthy position as we continue to face unknowns, including the state's local sales tax incentives that the state takes back and gives to the businesses, the national economy, and our own state government. I think it's important to see a broader perspective in order to appreciate and understand the importance of our fiscal policies and understand the proposed budget. So first, the economy. Again, for context, if you think two years ago, we were in the highest inflationary period since 1981. Federal Reserve short-term borrowing rate increases were the highest in 30 years, and then we saw the Fed raise interest rates 12 out of 13 times to a benchmark that was the highest rate it's been in 22 years, when prime rate went to 8.5, and that was last seen in 2006. Then going into this last year, the original projections was the Fed was going to start lowering the rate a lot, and that never came to fruition, and they've only lowered it once, and prime rate today's only a quarter percent lower, at eight and a quarter. From a budget perspective, remember, three budgets ago, the big unknown was the global pandemic. We didn't know that what that was doing to us when we were putting the budget together. Two budgets ago was the pending recession. We didn't know what that was going to look like. The last budget was what was the Fed's response to control inflation, jobs, and still talk of a potential recession. And this budget, it's the state for the first time ever implementing caps on municipal growth and threats of taking voter-approved local option sales tax and diverting that to a non-voter-approved purpose that the legislature sees fit. So long-term planning's been a pretty interesting exercise. As we continue an extended period of the financial unknowns, I want to thank the council for your oversight, your wisdom, and planning over six years when you passed the sales tax and use reserve fund policy. And it's because of that policy, we've been able to reduce the property tax levy for the fourth year in a row, and that's despite the rising inflation, despite receiving notice from the state that they're taking all of our sales tax because of the large project incentives. And so I guess the first big question people have is what's happening to the levy? So the property tax levy, current year, the city is only 20% of the total property tax bill. Somebody's entire property tax bill, the city is 20% of that. Education is 64%, and then the county and the others are 16%. And I'm happy to share that this proposed budget reduces our property tax levy approximately 8.48% over the current year, and we will continue to be the lowest levy of all the communities in both Sarpy and Douglas County. And our ability to reduce that levy four years in a row and continue to maintain that low levy is because of the strong financial planning that you put in place with fiscal policies over the last decade, the professional staff's management of the city's daily operations, and the community's continued growth. As we did in the current budget, we do plan to use the budgeted sales tax reserve in the proposed budget to offstate the state incentive programs where they're taking our sales tax away from us for previously approved agreements that we were not a party to. And I can't thank you enough for your support and prior planning that put us in a position to have an entire year's worth of sales tax withheld, and we are still proceeding with our budget. More specifically, on the revenue side, again, due to the state's business incentive programs, the use of sales tax reserve is our largest source of revenue, at 31% of total revenue in the general fund. That sales tax reserve is there because of that fiscal policy that you adopted six years ago. So again, thank you for your wisdom of that. That's $13.2 million we're taking out of that reserve fund to offset what the state is taking away from us, and then another $4.1 million for the half-cent sales tax. The 8.48% property tax levy reduction brings us down to about 37 cents per hundred. That's based on preliminary certifications. The certified valuations did just come out literally three or four hours ago, so the budget letter was based on preliminary. We did estimate pretty well, so I think we'll be in good shape when we see the certified and the impacts. That value, that new valuation is within the threshold that's set by the state of whether we have to go to that joint hearing or not. state of whether we have to go to that joint hearing or not. We will not have to go to the joint hearing. Valuations, approximately $4.3 billion, and that generates about 8.2 million in general fund revenue. On the general fund expense side, no surprise, personnel is our largest expense at about 70.5% of the total general fund expenditures. Wage increases and health insurance benefits are consistent with the union agreements that you previously approved. And then there's up to a 4% wage increase for management exempt employees factored into the budget. Then there's also some increases for job performance as necessary, and then also for some job comparability studies. And then the, there was state voter-approved increase in minimum wage, and so that's factored in for the part-time employees as well. Health insurance and dental insurance premiums for full-time employees for planning purposes, we have that at 15%. The last few years, we've been under that, but historically, we've seen some years at the 15%. So that's why we're budgeting at that level until we get the actuals. There are minimal staff additions in this budget. A lot of that was taken care of last year. About the only things we have is a general mechanic in public works, a part-time secretary in the fire department, and clarification on a role and title and placement on the community development director. And then the proposed budget still does continue to invest in supervisor and leadership development. On the public safety side with police, budget does retain the professional Kalia certification we've got, so we continue to invest in that. And then the biggest thing is just working with the council over the last two years is the police station, physical needs of the building. And so the budget does have 4.5 million in CIP and Federal CARES Act dollars, and then also plans to issue 4.5 million in public safety bonds. So together, that will help on, for the, fund the renovation and expansion of that project. You haven't approved any work yet, you haven't approved selection of a contractor, but we're allocating the dollars in anticipation of that. On the fire side, 54.1% of the budget is funded by other people, City of La Vista and the rural fire district. That's down slightly from 56.6, so it shows we're picking up a little bit more percentage than we historically have, but that's our growth because we share based on valuation. The budget includes funding for all new radios due to Motorola surprisingly ending some support. I think I'd shared that with everybody that we were facing that issue. And so we did include the budget, the wholesale replacement of all of Motorola, Motorola radios, and then HVAC improvements to Station 4, and then partial funding for potential purchase of some land for future Station 5. On the street side, we're in the sixth year of the long, of the pavement management plan, still using the UBUS product. I think all of the feedback we're getting, I think, is that has been positive, so we're continuing with that. If you remember, the original plan was for $2 million a year, but with inflation over the time, we're up to 2.467 million on that project. And then additionally, we're going to continue to retain a little over 240,000 for general pothole, concrete, asphalt-type repairs. And then like the last four years, both the plan and the repairs are fully funded without issuing any debt, so that's coming out of cash. The street budget also includes some software upgrades, drone software, traffic signal upgrades, funds to maintain aging infrastructure, and then additional equipment to manage the new growth. More generally, the city's previously, we had previously agreed to contribute a portion of our OPPD pilot fees, that's the in lieu of sales tax, and we agreed to give some of that to the sewer agency to jumpstart and pioneer the development of the infrastructure south of us. And this year, that'll be approximately $280,000. We have annual support, we've always done for partner organizations like the Papillion Community Foundation and Grow Sarpy, which is our economic development corporation. We've got carryover funding for downtown revitalization, software program costs for building and permits, budgeting and auditing software to both, to make processes more efficient, annual replacement of computers based on our IT rotation plan, annual computer licensing and our contract with Sarpy County for IT services. That's been a very good relationship, so we want to continue that. Space needs study at the library, plus some upgraded equipment for the library at the landing, the previously planned design of a new bike trail to connect the city's trail to the larger metro trail system, ball field fence replacements, upgrades at several restrooms within the city parks, and some new equipment, and then some consulting funds for minor updates to the city's comprehensive plan. Staff will do a lot of that initial work. On the capital improvement plan, which is property tax dollars, we've got 2.8 million in additional funding. All of the CIP projects are on the current plan and are scheduled to be paid without financing. So again, using our cash and not issuing bonds. They include a replacement wide-area mower, a bobcat trickster with attachments, three police vehicles, which are replacements, annual traffic signal upgrades, replacement of Friky Field parking lot, funding towards a future building expansion of public works, match funding for paving of Shram Road Parkway in front of the National Cemetery, reconstruction of East Lincoln to the Halleck Park entrance, and funding towards a future salt storage building expansion. On the Shram Road in front of the National Cemetery, we didn't think we'd be able to do that project for a number of years, but Congressman Bacon, we believe, he, he announced to me that we'll probably be getting 3 million in federal funding for that project. So we're setting aside the match funding for that. So I want to thank Congressman Bacon for that. On the bond fund, we're using about 21.1% of the, of the levy for that. We're down from the previous year about 2.6%. Our outstanding debt in the bond fund is about 83.88 million. 71 and a half percent of that is for voter-approved Papillion Landing. And the total debt, we are down 6.7 million from the prior year's budget. So our debt level is going down, and most of it now is for the voter-approved. On our bond rating, I want to make a note on that. We continue to hold a high grade AA1, which is investment grade from Moody's. And on our general obligations, and that was upgraded from an AA2 in April of 2018, which is during the economic downturn. So Moody's has been looking at us very favorably on how we've been managing. That strong rating has allowed us to refinance when rates are favorable. But this budget, due to the economy, we don't anticipate any bond refunding in this budget. But it will help us on the public service, public safety bond, probably. Side comment regarding the legislative special session, they did pass LB34 today. And in LB34, they did implement a cap on municipalities, and that's the first time ever they've placed a cap on us. And that cap is the higher of 0% or an inflation factor. They did previously put an infla, a cap on schools, but that was at 3%. This is the first time any agency has been given a 0% cap, but that was approved today. And with a 0% cap, probably the biggest concern that we've got is, again, the effect of the bonding, rating agencies like the Moody's. If we have a 0% cap and it's a deflationary period, we can't grow. So is that a negative risk factor when they're looking at us? And does that lead to a potential downgrade in our bond rating? If we do get a downgrade in our bond rating because of what the state did, the marketability of the bonds goes down and the interest expense to the residents goes up. But it's gonna be something we're gonna have to deal with. The, we had hopes that, well, we were hoping they wouldn't put any cap, and once they started the cap discussion, we were, we were negotiating about 3%. The League of Municipalities in the last full legislative session did have an agreement with the state that it would be a 3% cap, but the state reneged on that in the special session and put in the 0%. And, but Senator Rippey from Ralston, Senator Wayne, they both put in amendments to increase that cap. Rippey's was 3, Wayne's was 2.5. And then there was a strong floor speech by Speaker Arch in support of raising the cap, but it didn't go through. So we are at 0%. And the 0% is what the governor and Senator Lenahan had proposed. On the recreation fund, it includes the Papillion Landing and the Fieldhouse Complex, along with some of the non-revenue generating rec programs. A major portion of the landing complex, as you know, is supported by revenue from membership, user fees, donations, and other non-tax revenues. However, consistent with the prior guidance we had, I think we were, kind of set an informal policy about three years ago, there is a portion of the, of the staff there that is allocated to the general fund for the broader recreation programs. And so we continue that practice again this year. The non-revenue generating programs of the rec department are budgeted through the general fund at about $860,000, and that is generally in line with the previous year's budget level. Most of the rec expenses include regular programming, operational expenses, and maintenance expenses. However, we did include in the budget funding for several large fans in the Fieldhouse, the large ceiling-type fans at an industrial level. And we've realized in the summer, it gets a little warm in there without the air movement. And as a result, people, there is periods where people don't rent the facility. So get those fans in, get the air movement, should increase the, the amount of time that it can be rented out. And the budget does account for increased revenue because of that extra time. So the increased revenue will offset the installation of the fans. On the water and sewer funds, again, those are proprietary funds, and they're both budgeted to operate within the guidelines that were established by the previous approved rate studies that you did about five years ago. You approved those. That, the studies are good for about five years, so we are just wrapping up the new rate study. And that will determine the new rates for both funds, and we should be bringing that forward to you, I think, in January, the new rate study. And that then will cover the next five years from that point forward. The budget includes projects for both of the funds that were anticipated in the previous rate study, but we're not making any guesses on what the next rate study does. And so if the new rate study does either talk about a change in the rate structure or any new projects, we'll bring that forward to you in a budget amendment later on, when, after you approve that study. And then the, in the water and sewer funds, we continue, again, from a Moody's perspective, a high-grade investment rating of an AA2, and that's the highest that's ever been. So again, thank you for everything related to that. On the water fund, we include funding for painting of the North Water Tower, installation of a booster pump at the Summit Ridge Station, hydrant replacements and fiber communication upgrades at the well field. And then on the sewer side, funding for the replacement of some aging equipment, trenchless pipe repair equipment, software upgrades, one new fleet vehicle, and sewer relining. On the golf fund, also a proprietary fund, not using property tax, that revenue's just from normal operations, about 242,000's going towards the bonded debt. We're using about 242 of reserves towards the bonded debt. We did that last year as well, so we're staying with that practice. And the good news is the last of the bonds are actually scheduled to be paid off in December of 2028. So we've got a few more years, but then that'll be a game changer there when that debt goes away. So very close to seeing that come to fruition. Then we also include about 250,000 in reserves project at both of the courses, design work for new irrigation at Terra Hills, pond erosion at Eagle Hills, new ball range cleaner for the Eagle Hills driving range, minimal tree work at both courses, phase three of the cart path installation at Terra Hills, cart path at Eagle Hills, and minimal irrigation at both courses. And that's all in line with the golf capital improvement plan. And again, four of the council members who are golfers are on that golf ad hoc committee, and that's all in line with what's been brought forward and recommended from that group. So again, thank you for that guidance that you've provided the last few years. The voter-approved half-cent sales tax by law is dedicated for parks and recreation, and from the city side, we cannot use that for general operations. The primary use of that half cent is for the, the bond payment on Papillion Landing. And the proposed budget fully does, fully funds our bond obligations and the required reserves remain fully funded there. We allocate 2.5 for, 2.5 million for the Halleck Park Road System that we've previously talked about, and the parking lot project previously approved by council. And while it is voter-approved for a very specific local purpose, again, there has been threats by the state to take a portion for purposes not approved by the voters and not for local use. In this last special session, there was a bill introduced on the floor, and it had very serious discussion where they were going to take 12% of our local option voter-approved sales tax and use that for state purposes. Thankfully, the bill didn't pass, but we've got to continue to have a watchful eye in case there are further attempts by the legislature to divert those funds for purposes other than what the Papillion voters approved. On the community betterment fund, again, not property tax, but it's the revenue that's generated by Keno. And again, by law, is restricted to community projects. The current budget has Veterans Park Project, our annual B-cycle station fees, funding to the Arts Foundation per the MOU that the council previously approved, some funding for Winter Wonderland that we do every year. And remember, about every three to four years, we do that community survey. It's time to do that again, so we'll fund that out of community betterment. We've got some continued downtown revitalization and then funding for the underlayment at Hickory Hills and Halleck Park that we'd previously talked about. Kind of a similar theme is with the sales tax. The legislature in the current special session included in a bill, a dramatic increase in the state's Keno tax. So again, they were attempting to take a local non-property tax revenue source that supports local projects and divert that to the state for purposes that do not fund local community projects, but instead fund state-level initiatives. Thankfully, that bill did not pass, but again, we've got to keep a watchful eye for further attempts to divert our local funds. Lastly, an attempt to avoid any carryover budget amendment, which we've historically done. The requested carryovers are part of the budget, and if you've got your detailed budget line item report, there's a column that delineates the carryovers, and so those are in this budget. All of the carryover items are fully funded in the current fiscal year 2324 budget. It's just that the projects won't be done by the end of this fiscal year. So in closing, I just want to thank the employees that serve the residents. They faithfully, professionally, and diligently serve the community and support the established mission, vision, and goals of the council, dedication to success, to successfully keep the community moving forward. With so many uncertain external factors is why the city's a great place to call home. Thanks to the department heads, who are true professionals in their fields. And with all of the staff, we have a great team that really cares about Papillion. I also want to personally thank each of you council members for your support. Again, as we continue to manage the growing community, we retain the lowest property tax revenue despite, once again, having our sales tax withheld by the state for an entire year for agreements that we were not a party to. And a huge thank you to Administrator Amber Powers, Deputy Administrator Mark Sturzma for their strong leadership and balance of everyday pressures with long-term vision and sustainability. And a very special thanks to our Finance Director Nancy. Your fiscal management insights and wisdom is incredible. You're why we sleep at night. So, thank you. Again, to the council, I want to reiterate again, that cash reserve policy that you approved in 2010, that is, it played a critical role in our ability to maintain the fiscal position despite having to navigate the last four years, which included COVID, high inflation, unknown national economic conditions, having our sales tax withheld due to state incentives and threats from the legislature to remove specific revenue sources intended for local projects and diverting those to state's use. And as you know, we were awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Offers Association. That certificate goes above and, says that governments that go above and beyond the minimum reporting requirements, we do that by creating that comprehensive financial report, and then that gets submitted to an independent review board. And then it's after that review, they determine who gets the award. And we've now participated over 10 years, I believe, haven't we? And I think we've gotten the award every single year. So again, Nancy, thank you to your team. I don't think there's a lot of cities that go to that extra effort, and that is all about transparency and readability of the financial. So again, thank you for you and your team, Nancy. I haven't mentioned the state at all or the legislature or the governor, so I'll, I'll take a little bit of a timeout and talk about the special session since I haven't done that. The budget was prepared and introduced literally at the start of the special session, before all of the bills had been introduced and before they had had any special, any committee hearings. And so the budget was permitted, basically submitted based on the old rules. Any ideas and plans that were evolving from the executive branch, we were not a party to any of those conversations. And even when they would publish plans, the bills, the corresponding bills didn't always match the plans, and the plans continued to change. So really, I don't think there was a plan. It was just an evolving set of ideas that a closed working group that we were not a part of was trying to move forward. But anyway, when the bills were introduced and debated, again, one of them would have taken a significant portion of our voter-approved local option sales tax. They would have dramatically increased the Keno tax, and again, divert local project funding, all for new state purposes. But thankfully, those didn't pass. But again, what did pass was the introduction of the 0% cap on municipalities. That's going to have a fundamental impact on how we do long-term planning. It's gonna probably have an impact on how we manage our capital improvement plan and potentially how we have historically supported the state. We've got a lot of cooperative relationships with the state, and a lot of cases, we fund those. We're gonna have to establish what's the value to us in those partnerships and either renegotiate contracts and shift costs to the state on unfunded mandates, or stop doing projects in cooperation with the state, or maybe implement some fees because of state mandates. in cooperation with the state, or maybe implement some fees because of state mandates. But the rules are pretty unclear right now. The bill's been introduced, but they haven't developed them into statute, so we don't necessarily know how they'll be interpreted. But it will impact next year's budget planning. And with our recent experiences, it's gonna take the state quite a while to figure out what the rules actually mean and roll them down to us. So we'll be in a little bit of a gray period for quite a while. So if you have questions, make sure Amber, Mark, or myself are aware of those, but we may or may not know the answer. But the question actually may spark some thoughts. We're already starting a file of ideas we have on how we might be able to react to this, both policies we might implement, but also things we'll ask the state, ask the state to change as well. We do understand that state tax policy regarding property tax needs to be modernized. Nobody disagrees with that. But there have been fundamental issues that we, along with other cities, have been raising to the state for the last 10 years. And they have, they have never been considered. And the issues now are gonna become even more critical as they shift from a stable, auditable revenue source of property tax to a variable, unpredictable, un-auditable revenue source of sales tax. The main thing on that is related to sales tax, a couple of things. On the submission side, and this is not new, when a business submits their sales tax to the state, they need to say what jurisdiction was that sales tax collected in. If you think about Papillion, we have in the postal address multiple ZIP codes and multiple cities. You'll find Springfield, Omaha, Bellevue, and La Vista, all as a postal address within Papillion. And you'll find shared ZIP code. So if you're a business that doesn't understand jurisdictional boundaries, where are you reporting your sales tax to? So we are losing sales tax. So one of our requests to the state has been modernize their submission process, so they look at the address and tie it to the jurisdictional boundary. That's the basic fundamentals of GIS. And so they, they should have the ability to do that. So we've been asking for that. And we're also, we're actually gonna work with the league to try to introduce that bill. If they could do that, we'll have a more predictable sales tax. But the other issue then becomes on the receipt side. When they go ahead, when they send us our monthly check, remember, we get no backup documentation. We get a check. We don't know what makes that up. And the sales tax agreements at the state level are confidential, so we can't audit it. And so we can't trust it's being submitted right, and we can't trust what we get, and there is no ability to audit that. And that is our biggest obstacle to moving to sales tax. So we're asking them to help fix both of those items. Again, they are not new items, but neither the legislature nor the Department of Revenue historically has acted on that. And until that's fixed, shifting is going to be a major concern. Because the governor nor the legislature even acknowledges those two fundamental items in their plans, we are gonna work with the League of Municipalities to include them in the next proposed legislative package. I think we've already up to, what, six bills we want introduced? And so we'll see if that goes forward. A side benefit of fixing that on the sales tax side and making that more predictable is Moody's actually may look at that favorable because now sales tax will become a little more predictable and audible. So that might offset a little bit of the negativity of the 0% cap, but who knows? We're gonna continue, no matter what's going on, we're gonna continue to conservatively manage as we navigate through the unknowns of the national economy and the impacts of the legislative special session. The 0% cap was passed today on final reading. And we've already begun, again, as I mentioned, to develop thoughts about how, what new potential policies we might need at the local level, ideas for legislation to propose to the league, that maybe they could champion. And then we'll start thinking about potential future budget impacts and how we manage that. The details of what the new future is under the caps will evolve over the next couple of years. It's gonna be a learning process. But initially, we should start to understand a little bit more as the 2025 legislative session gets underway. Because I do believe, and the governor, I think, has publicly stated, he's not done. And so when this next long session starts up, he's gonna be pushing forward his ideas. And so we've gotta be very keen on what they're doing, again, to divert the local revenue sources of the cities to non-approved projects. And then as we start our budget planning, kind of early spring, next year, we'll probably start learning a lot as well. So again, this budget was based on the rules as we knew them, not the rules as we're trying to think of what they're gonna be. And then just back to the property tax levy. The median home price in Papillion, based on the U.S. Census Bureau, which is kind of the indicator I've always used, because it is the stable one, is 269,600. With the preliminary 30-cent levy, the median household would pay about $998 a year. That's $83.17 a month in property tax to the city. That's less than most choose to pay for their home internet service or for their cell phone plan. And for that 83.17 a month, they get the highest levels of police and fire services along with professional public works, streets, libraries, parks, recreation planning, building, and administration. We will remain, I think, about 20% of the total property tax bill would be my guess. So hopefully, as you can see, the mission that you created in the 2020 council retreat and reaffirmed in the '23 council retreat continues to be displayed in the budget priorities. That mission was to preserve our small-town feel and promote quality of life while delivering exceptional services for our residents, visitors, and businesses, and to sustain an environment, physical, social, and economic that people are proud to call home. And the goals that you set to achieve the mission were strong guidelines for the department heads as they put the budget together. And again, over the years, we've had many unknowns from COVID to the national economy that we do our best to plan around. But now the state in the last year has become another one of those unknowns. What will be introduced in the 2025 legislative session that removes local control of our city councils? And what historical, stable, non-property tax revenue sources will they continue to try and take for state purposes is the new unknown. So again, depending on what finally comes out of the special session and how the statutes are implemented, there's a possibility a budget amendment could be required to account for the 2024, 2025 impacts. If there are any of those, I suspect those would probably be mid-year once we understand the rules. So again, to the council, thank you for your leadership at a policy level, your trust in the administration to manage, together a strong partnership that continues to allow Papillion to thrive as a place that feels like home. That concludes the budget presentation. I'll open the public hearing. Any proponents or opponents? Nobody's coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any council comments? Mr. Stube?
Yeah, a couple of questions with regard to the legislation. So LB34...
We haven't talked about legislation.
From what I understand, it's applicable in 2026, right? So is it the calendar year or would it be our fiscal year?
From my reading of the bill, it is for new budgets that are effective after the July 1 date. And I think they picked July 1 because counties are on a different fiscal calendar. And they also were hit with the zero. So I think it'll hit the counties in their next budget. So it'll be effective for us with the following budget year.
Okay. And then the other question is, there was an exemption for public safety, is that correct?
There was. There was, but the definition of public safety is pretty loose. So that's one of the things we need to understand of what does that mean?
Yeah, does that just mean fire, police, or does it mean anything related to inspections and things like that?
Right. And even though something is in fire, police, and fire, is that public safety? So there's a lot to understand there. Mr. Mungard?
Thank you for all that information you gave. I think this is probably my 29th or 30th budget public hearing. And I can only think of maybe two times that anybody has come in and commented and given us guidance at all during the public hearing. I've wondered over the years what conclusions I should draw from that, that nobody shows up to talk about the budget. If there are people watching, perhaps we will get some feedback. You know, I'm disappointed that nobody from the state or from the governor's office is here to give us guidance because clearly they think that they know more about what our budget should be than, than we do. So if in the next...
Side, a side comment on that, just as a follow-up. Of course, from the state level, publicly has been stated that the issue is local spending is the issue. But for a number of years, a number of cities, mayors and administrators have offered to state senators and to the administration, come down and learn about city operations and still walk through our budgets. And to date, the only senator that's ever taken us up on that is Senator Arch, and we've never had anybody from the executive come and do that.
You know, I, as you've pointed out, that we may have amendments to the budget that will cut back our revenue source, you know, cut back our available revenue. Clearly, the only opportunity, the only response we can have to that is to cut our services. And when that, if that happens, and if we have to reduce snow removal, if we have to reduce maintenance of the parks, if we have to reduce all those things that people in Papillion praises for and tell us that that makes this city such a nice place to live. If we have to do those things, I, I hope they all remember that the state in Nebraska, led by the governor, did that. We didn't do it. Hope it doesn't happen. I'm all in favor of looking for ways to be more efficient. If we can come up with those, we clearly should. I praise you and the staff for cutting the levy as much as you did, eight and a half percent. That's a, that's a fantastic cut. The fact that it is less than what we're seeing as the assessment valuation, I don't see how we can do anything about that. I mean, that's out of our hands. I've, you know, I, I had the personal experience of protesting valuation assessment in property this past year and then talking to the assessor out of another county. I was flat-out told that it's not the assessment is not the problem, not the valuation, that's not the problem. The problem is the tax rates. And I, I think your discussion of the special session has highlighted that. If we can come up with some answers, I guess we need cheaper houses here. Maybe we can come up with something. Of course, I'll vote for this budget. I just expressed my disappointment and my perplexity of, as to why the state feels this is all our problem. But, thank you.
And you mentioned that the natural thing is to cut services and programs. I'll tell you, from myself and administrators, we've already, even as this bill was starting to be contemplated and we knew the zero, 0% was there, we've already started brainstorming a wide variety of things from policy perspectives and a whole bunch of things of how we can react to it. And Amber's got a growing file of ideas. We're not doing anything with them yet, other than collecting the ideas. But once we really understand the framework we're operating under, we'll put together a strategy. And depending on how broad it is, maybe we'll even have a council retreat to roll those out and have some active discussions, because some of these might be long-term planning type things. But don't anticipate probably much anything until probably first quarter. We're just gonna be brainstorming. So if you have ideas that will come to you, throw them to Amber and we'll just throw them into the growing file. But we have already started a lot of ideas and we might be able to work through those in probably a council retreat. So appreciate that. Mr. Ringberg?
Well, I'm not gonna go into the weeds about the special session. You explained that perfectly well.
I don't think I mentioned special session.
Yeah. And I, and Councilman Mungard summed it up pretty well, I think, too. I guess I'll make a very general comment and just a reminder, this community, over the years, over at least a decade, was ranked nationally as one of the top 10 cities to live. It was named, I think, by Business Week, the best place to raise children, and so forth and so on. I am certainly thankful the state thinks that they can run this city better than we can. I think it takes a lot of chutzpah, I like to use that word, takes a lot of chutzpah to tell a community like ours that manages it well, that are transparent and gets rewarded for that, and are ranked as one of the best places to live year after year, would turn around and decide that they could do it better than we can. I'm anxious to see how that works out. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, just last comment. I think the thing that, no matter what the policies are, we'll figure out how to manage under them. That doesn't scare me too much, other, there will be impacts, but we'll figure them out. I think the thing that bothers me the most in this whole thing, and it's almost an ethical issue. It's not illegal. I was wondering a little bit if it was a constitutional issue, but I don't think it is. I think they have every right to do what they've done. I just question the ethics of it, is we've had voter-approved mandates to raise sales tax for a very specific intended purpose, and they talk about taking that and using it for state-level purposes. I've got an ethical issue with that. The Keno tax, I don't think that's an ethical one, that's just more political. But again, the whole goal has been to drive economic development and help a community without using property tax. That's exactly what the community betterment fund does. And they want it, they want to raise the tax on that so we get less community betterment dollars, which now says we can't use a non-property tax source for economic development and community betterment. If we want to keep doing it, where's it coming from? Property tax. It's kind of backwards, but just a side comment. Any other last comments? Is there a motion to adjourn? Before I get in trouble, Mr. Glover? Motion? Second by Mr. Gaines. Please vote.
Seventy is adjourned.
We are adjourned. Thank you again.